Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. The time is 6:30. The day is November the 10th, and I'm calling this regularly scheduled meeting of the Macomb Township Zoning Board of Appeals to order. The second item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Legions. Please stand with me for the pledge.
I have a pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. We have a roll call this evening. I actually didn't talk to anybody, but Ms. Posey, would you do the roll call for us?
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
If I can remember everyone's name right now. What do you got? Member? DeCosta?
Here.
Member, um...
Piper. Piper DeBruin.
Piper.
Sorry.
Half asleep.
Put you on the spot.
Member DeBruin.
Present.
And Member Posey, and Chairman Tuckfield. See, I can't even remember your name right now.
No worries. It's probably not fair of you to do that when you haven't been here for a little bit.
And Orbin up for twenty-four hours.
A long time. We appreciate the clerk being here. She's had a long week so far. With that being said, this evening we have four regular members and one alternate, which puts us over our three mandatory, and also at a full number of board members. I'm gonna move us on to item four, which is addressing any conflicts of interest. At this time, I'm going to ask if any of the members have a conflict of interest on any item this evening. We're gonna do a roll call, and if any do, please signify by saying yes. If you do not, please signify by saying no. And Kristi, I guess I'll call a roll, just for this week. We'll give you a break. All that said, Mr. Piper?
No.
Mr. DeBruin?
No.
Mr. Tuckfield says no. Ms. Posey?
No.
Mr. DeCosta?
No.
That said, there's no stated conflict of interests tonight, so we are going to move on to item five, which is the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Posey. Is there support?
Support.
Support of my Mr. DeBruin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and tonight's agenda is adopted. Item six is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. That would be for October the 6th. Is there any discussion or motions on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. DeBruin to approve as read?
Yes.
As read. Any support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. That moves us on to item seven, which is old business. Mr. Box, I don't believe you have any old business this evening?
We do not.
All right. Moves us on to item eight, which is new business. The first item on new business is item 8A, a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.20-8B and 10.20-3G8, for permanent parcel 0817476005. Mr. Box, could you take us through the reviews on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Tuckfield and board. As you mentioned, this is a variance request for athletic physical therapy. This is located in the plaza on the northeast corner of 23 Mile and Romeo Plank. If you see the map behind you, you can see that it's kind of in the corner of the plaza, and the applicant is seeking a variance to install a sign that encroaches into the neighboring tenant's space. Because of this, it's considered an off-premise sign. That being said, the off-premise signs are referred to as billboards. I know this is not the type of billboard most of you would think of when you hear the term billboard, but per our ordinance, that is how it's treated. So, these, with that being said, they are seeking that variance to be off-site, as I mentioned, onto the neighboring tenant. So, as you see in the rendering here, again, it's in the corner of the plaza. It's a long ways away from the roadway. The dashed line, vertical line you see on that picture, is the edge of their tenant's space. Beyond that would be the hardware store. They are seeking to kind of center it in that area. They're not over the size limit. It's just the location of it. They feel that it being more centered gives them a little bit more visibility out to Romeo Plank. That being said, staff has looked at this. There's no health and safety or welfare concerns on this situation. The affected tenants, Hardware and the landlord have both given their consent for this. And we feel that, based on their proximity to the roadway, being kind of hidden back in that corner, and the roadways are not perfectly parallel with their building, that there is a hardship here in terms of visibility, and we would be in support of this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions for Mr. Box from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Josh, you indicated that Ace Hardware, they've indicated that they don't have a problem with the request, but however, what happens when Ace Hardware maybe moves or takes, leaves the space? Is that a problem for this tenant then, if they've encroached on that person, that company's space?
I think, given, if Ace Hardware were to leave, I would assume that the landlord would have that. Since the landlord is also agreeing to this, whoever comes and takes that space, I think it would be kind of explained to them that this is the situation, and hopefully the landlord wouldn't allow them to object to it, or wouldn't allow somebody in there who's going to object to it. I don't know if there's a good answer for that, if Mr. Orlando can speak to that a little bit.
I think once the variance is granted, then it runs with the land.
Okay. So, we don't have to include anything in the motion? Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Should the tenant change? That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Posey. Any other questions? Hearing none is the applicant in the audience. If you are, please go ahead and come forward to the center table here, and state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Jim Fields Allied Signs, 33650, Giffords Drive, Clinton Township. As he said, this is just trying to move this sign a little more centered down the fascia because it's in the far corner. This sign still falls within one square foot of the allotment, so it's a 38-square-foot sign. With the old fascia, they put a 32-square-foot. So, they're gonna get about two inches, an extra foot in length in the middle of the fascia, so hopefully that, by the way that wedge shape is on the parking lot, you can see it in the corner of that building because it's just, it's hard to see, especially with the facade, and then you have the large Ace Hardware that's pitched back there.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant, or the applicant's representative? I did have a question, actually, with regards to what you just said, and maybe I misunderstood you, but are you saying that an old sign or a previously designed sign maintained within the width of the unit would have to be smaller, even though it might be?
No, they just went with the 32 because of the options.
Okay.
The brand options for available space dictates the sides and where they can be positioned from the left to right on the devising walls, so...
So, let me ask the, I guess ask the question differently. If you were to maintain only within their units, you could put this sign within the bounds of their unit's walls?
They could go in that space, yes. It would be right up to the edge.
It would be up to the edge, and it might be, might not be ideal. Okay.
So, it just made more sense between the landlord and that it would center in that space.
Understood. When you were talking, it sounded like maybe it would be difficult to fit even the size there, which obviously, Mr. Box, it indicated that size is allowable for the square footage. I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none from the board, I'm going to, and without objection, I'm going to open to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, and also without objection, I'm going to close public portion and bring it back to the board. Is there any comments, questions, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to grant this variance. I think it just makes common sense. It would even look better with it being centered on that fascia. You know, just the visibility. Romeo Plank's on an angle there, and it just, it's just the right thing to do. The spirit of the intent of the law, I don't think, anticipated this type of situation, so I would move to grant this variance.
All right. Motion by Mr. Piper. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Posey. I'm gonna call the roll. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. DeBruin?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. That motion passes five to nothing, and the variance is granted. Thank you, sir. You as well. All right. That's gonna move us on to item 8B, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.0321A2, for permanent parcel 0827100033. Mr. Box, could you take us through this?
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield and board. So, this applicant is seeking a reduction in the required setback for a temporary structure from existing residential structures on a neighboring property. This property is located on Heidenreich, just south of 22 Mile. So, a little background, Wexford Meadows is a platted subdivision that has an approved site plan, and the applicant is actively selling those lots and will be building homes in that area. But as you can see, Wexford Meadows does not extend all the way out to Heidenreich. And that being said, they would like to have the sales trailer in one of the outlots on Heidenreich, which they also own. And I believe they own both the lot to the north of the existing house and to the south of the existing house, one where they're planning to put a sales trailer, and I'll let the applicant correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the other one will be used as the access for construction, so as not to bring all that traffic through the existing neighborhoods. That being said, because it's a temporary sales trailer, per ordinance, it has to have a 75-foot setback from any other residential structure in the township. And when you look at the area, there is not, if you setback from 75 feet from one side of one residence and 75 from the other, there's zero room to place this in there. So, that being said, they're seeking some reductions to fit this sales trailer in this location. They do have a site plan in as well at this time, which I set one on each of your seats. You should have seen that when you arrived. This is the site plan that they've submitted, and these dimensions are what they're seeking in terms of the setbacks. There's no really, there's no objections from assessing or fire. There's no engineering-related concerns, as they noted. And as I mentioned, that there's not room to fit a temporary structure in this location. The variance would allow this temporary structure to be placed. We do think that, you know, screening could be a consideration as a condition on this variance. Also, they have, as you see on the, I'll go back, you see on the site plan, the orientation that they've laid out this sales trailer. You know, it could be not only screening from the residential pieces, it's possible that that could be turned at a different direction and minimized, or reduce the setback variance that they would be requesting, but this is what they're proposing this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any question for Mr. Box from the board?
Josh, you kind of touched on it with the, if they went in a different direction, if they went east to west instead of north and south, would they be within the...
A setback variance would still be required. They couldn't, but it would be...
Would they be within that setback if that was the case?
Yes, they would still need a variance. It would just be a smaller variance.
Okay, thank you. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bruin.
Have the adjacent property owners been contacted at all?
They received notification of this meeting, yes.
Okay. And they have made no, to date, there's been no objections?
I have not heard from either of them, no.
Are there questions? Hearing none is the applicant in the audience this evening. If you are, sir, please come ahead to the seat and state your name and address for the record, and any comments you might have.
Cosmo Lombardo, 13001, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township. So, Josh, I think, covered it pretty well. We do, we purchased the 16 existing lots in Wexford Meadows, as well as the two outlots along Heinrich. If you look at the approved site plan for Wexford Meadows, it actually shows on the northern outlot an access there for construction traffic, to kind of keep the construction traffic out of Brittany Park because it's kind of a long drive through Brittany Park to get in there. And so, we thought it made sense, if we're gonna keep construction traffic out of there, to keep sales traffic out of there, too. Typically, when we construct a sales trailer in a platter in a site condominium, we just submit for a building permit and just go do it, but in this case, because it's on an outlot, we needed to do this. But we just felt it made more sense. We're certainly open to any screening requirements with arborvitaries, I think, was mentioned in the review letter. We're certainly open to any of that. And then, as far as turning it sideways, the only thing with that is, then you're gonna be, you have to turn it sideways, you have to put your parking. The parking goes out front, so now you're stuffing it close to one guy, significantly closer to one guy, and then the other guy's got parking and headlights facing at him. So, in our, the way we looked at it, it's better if the parking's out front, it's facing Heinrich. Now, we're not putting it maybe 10 feet from one guy and 70 from the other, and then have parking right next to the other one.
All right, very good. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one quick question. Approximately, how long do you think this temporary trailer will be there?
A part of this would be, and we're in for a site plan approval, and that approval will require that, when the lots in Wexford Meadows are sold, that it is removed. With today's economy, I don't know how long it'll take, but, very surprising, we've already sold three lots in there, so...
What's your hopeful timeline? Let's put it that way.
Hopeful timeline, maybe a year or a year and a half.
One more question.
Go ahead, Ms. Posey.
So, would you pull out, pull the trailer out before you've sold all the lots? Or do you wait to sell everything before you take that out?
We'd sell, we'd sell all the lots and then remove the trailer.
Any other questions?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. DeBruin.
This is probably for Josh, possibly for the attorney. Are there any requirements for this, since it's termed temporary? Is there a requirement that the township has of how long it can be there, maximum time?
It's, they're coming through the site plan process, so they will have an active site plan there. I don't believe that there's a set restriction for how long the temporary can be there. I know often they're there for a year or so. I know some other locations that they've been there for a number of years, if it's a larger development, but I would assume that eventually they're gonna build on this lot as well, so I don't think it's something that they would want to leave there for longer than they have to.
I had a question for you as well, Josh. When this is a normal subdivision, I'm assuming that the temporary structure can go in a lot without the setback because we see this happen fairly often. Why is this distinguished here? Is it because it's not part of the same platted parcel, or what makes a difference?
I think in a normal platted subdivision, it would also require 75 feet. It's 75 feet from a structure, not from the lot line.
At which point, they haven't built anything yet.
Correct.
Gotcha. All right, very good. I also had a question for Tim. Variance is run with the land, as we just talked about in the last one. This is a temporary structure.
Right.
Does it make any sense to sunset a variance, seeing as we're referring to a specific site plan that is a temporary use and not necessarily something we're looking at leaving on this parcel for forever?
Yeah, it makes sense to do that. The problem is, we don't know how long the, you know, applicant is gonna need the structure. So, if you just do it for the period of up until the lots are sold, that gives them what they need, and it still results in it being removed.
Okay. And we are able to do that even though it is a variance, which, again, typically runs with the land?
Right.
All right. And you're okay with that in principle, that it is, the variance is sunsetted if the board was to grant it that way?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? With that, I will go up to, if with no objections, I'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this request? Seeing none, and with no objections, I will bring it back to the board for any comments, questions, or motions. And I should mention that if someone does desire to make a motion in the affirmative, we should probably include some of the language, or some languages Mr. Box indicated, for screening shrubbery along the parking lot.
I'll make a motion, if I can. That would be to grant the variance with regards to section 10.0321A2 to reduce the setback from a residential structure to 75 to 35 feet, with the caveat that this variance would expire when all the lots are sold to the development to the south, or would be west?
East.
East.
East? As well as that the owner plant and maintain some type of screening along each side of the temporary structure.
And just to verify, you're referring to the temporary structure in the parking lot with the screening?
Correct, yes.
Very good. Motion by Mr. DeCosta. Is there any support on that motion?
I'll support that.
Supported by Mr. Piper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Orlando, I might be saying, did you have anything you wanted to mention on that? Okay, just wanted to double-check. Hearing no discussion, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeBruin?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. That motion passes five to nothing. Thank you very much. All righty, let's move on to item 8C, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.0704D3B, for permanent parcel 0820351187. Mr. Box, could you take us through this?
Thank you, Chairman Tuckfield and board. This is for a variance request for a setback for the rear yard. This is in the Monarch Estates Residential Development near 22 Mile and Garfield. The required residential lot setback for the rear yard is 35 feet. As you'll probably recall from seeing in other instances, that can get difficult when these lots are odd shapes. Where do you measure from? In this case, I would presume that whoever initially looked at this measured the 35 feet from, if you can see my cursor here, the rear lot line, which you see, is above the 35 feet. But per ordinance, actually, they should have been measuring. Anything that falls behind the rear of the house is considered the rear lot line. So, this is the setback request, reduction that they're seeking. That being said, the different departments took a look at this. There were no objections from engineering, assessing, and fire. As noted in the planning review, a grant of the variance would allow it to be developed as it was originally approved. It's potential that the building, it potentially could have been redesigned, and the building slid over, but again, this did go through a plot plan approval through the township, and it did get approved initially. I don't know to what extent, but I do know some of the footings, I think, in the basement have already been placed at this point. And that being said, with the odd shape of the lot, we do feel that there is a little bit of a hardship here, as well as a hardship for them on the fact that a plot plan was approved for this. Public Works, I will note, did have a little bit concern with the final grade. They just want to make sure that proper slopes are gonna be obtained, being that close to the rear property line. But that being said, we do feel that there's a hardship here, and again, it was looked at once by a township inspector, and the plot plan had been approved, and it was caught after the fact, so they're here trying to clean up that issue now.
Thank you, Mr. Box. If you're the applicant, if you could state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Sure. Migueli Churco, on behalf of BCLR and MJC East, 46600 Romeo Plank, Suite 5, Macomb, Michigan. Yeah, just to, you know, again, reinforce the odd shape of this lot. You can see at the frontage, it's nearly 107, or just over 107 feet wide. I think the typical width in this subdivision is 70-foot lots, so, you know, what we were intending to achieve here is a wider lot, a wider house. So, that's, I guess, part of our original intention. The layout on this lot, you know, as far as alternatives, that part of the discussion. There's basically no way to salvage the footings that are in, so essentially, any alternative would require a complete removal of the basement, or of the foundation footings, and fill of the basement that was already dug. So, essentially, it would require just going back and starting from scratch. And again, you know, had this been caught on any of our initial submissions, we would have, you know, gladly proposed a different house or a different layout for the lot. It's, again, just the fact that it went through, I think, was only caught on the third review after a permit had been granted when we came back, just to do a minor revision to some of the grades. So, it, you know, had been submitted, had been revised, resubmitted, and approved at that point, and then we were just adjusting some of the brick ledges, and that's when the setback, need for a variance was discovered as part of this.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Looking at the plan here, could the entire house, could it have been just shifted? I mean, what, just looking at the far left side of that, is that all open on that side?
So, this particular house, if it had been shifted all the way, it still would have required a variance. So, it would have had to be a different layout or a different house. Potentially, it could have fit if it were flipped, where the garage were on the eastern side, but, you know, typically, in construction, you put the garage on the high side of the lot, or the driveway, excuse me. So, that was, you know, our intention in putting the driveway on the western side to reduce the number of steps in the garage going into the house.
Mr. Box, question on side setbacks on a lot like this. Does the, I guess there'll be the east side, have a seven-and-a-half-foot setback? Is it just the side of the house that determines what, where the side setback is versus the rear in this case?
Correct. And it does meet the seven-and-a-half-foot setback on the side.
Obviously, the back right corner is at 12, so, yeah.
Yeah. And I will also note that you can kind of see the grayed-out areas here, the lots that would butt this. These are rear yards for these lots. I think there would be a bigger concern if there was another house here, and this was their side yard, and this was, you know, in somebody's side yard that close, but these are rear yards, so for what that's worth, I just wanted to point that out, that those are not somebody else's side yard. That's a rear yard there. Thanks for pointing that out, because I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, if that's another house over there, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I don't believe we have any public besides the applicant left in the audience, but without objection, I'm gonna open up the public, to the public, just in case. If anybody wants to comment on this, please come forward. If you're both with the applicant, which I think you are, we're going to close public portion and bring it back to the board. I guess I would just make a couple of comments on this. One, if this plan was brought before us and nothing had been in the ground, my thought would be rearrange the house, which does make it tricky for us. It's hard to call the building department misinspecting something a practical difficulty. That seems like it could potentially put us into a rather difficult scenario of pitting a builder against the building department and determining who caused what issue where. That said, we have looked at parcels differently with their regular shapes, and I certainly understand the concern there. I don't know what way the board wishes to go with this. I would just say that if we choose to grant it, we should probably be relatively careful on the reasoning that we give for any practical difficulty, because like I said, I really don't want to get us into a position where we are essentially granting a variance off of the building department, even though I can recognize, as Mr. Box said, it seems relatively difficult if something is built off of a plan that was inspected and approved, and then determined to be wrong. So, those would be my comments. Any comments, discussion, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the variance based on the hardships that have been discussed as the lot is oddly shaped and adjacent to a drain, with the contingency that they include the screening to help mitigate the reduced rear setback.
Very good. A question on the motion, Ms. Posey, although I, let's go for a second. First, is there a second or support?
Support.
Support by Mr. DeCosta. Do you want to define out the screening at all, like, should we say, per the planning department, or give it any more definition?
If I may speak to the applicant, do you have arborvitaries, anything in mind if you were to be required to put the screening in?
So, this house is being constructed as a spec home. It doesn't have a buyer yet. So, I guess, would like some flexibility for that eventual homeowner to have some input on the type of screening that would go in. Arborvitaries are, you know, not objectionable to us, but obviously, whoever is gonna be living there may have a different preference. So, that's, I guess, our primary concern for any type of screening requirement is just having it be acceptable to whoever will have to live there and maintain it.
Mr. Chairman, if you want me to amend the motion, I will include it to indicate that, to be decided upon.
that, to be decided on with the, by the applicant, as long as it's done.
Okay. Mr. DeCosta, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
All right. Motion by Ms. Lawson.
Ms. Lawson.
Ms. Posey.
So, you're tired, too.
Apparently, I know better. Supported by Mr. DeCosta. I should say, before I do that, are you okay with this, Mr. Orlando, that we've got it worded? Okay. Very good. I'll call the roll then, hopefully I'll get it correctly. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. DeBruin?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
That motion passes five to nothing. The variance is granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
All right. That puts us on to item nine, which is public comments. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak this evening?
I don't see any.
So, I will move on to ZBA member comments, which is item ten. Any comments from the members?
Well, I would like to just comment, I'm glad Christie's here tonight, because I was, I'm amazed that you're even up and running after this week. And I wanted to comment about the election. We had over eleven hundred, like I mentioned before, you know, in-person voters, and it's, even though there was a line, people said they waited over an hour, but it moved smoothly. We, it was a very well-run election overall, so I want to compliment Christie on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Very good. Any other comments?
Do you know if we have a December meeting?
There will be.
Okay.
And is it the first Thursday?
December first.
Okay.
Yep.
December first, very good. I would also pass on some thanks to Ms. Posey. I've worked a few elections in this township, and she's got a good staff. They're working well together. It was a very busy election, as Mr. Piper indicated. We got, had a lot of turnout, and a lot of good people work in the polls. A lot of good stuff happened, so. We have multiple people here, actually. Mr. Box, I think, worked the election. Mr. Carey, who's manning the sound booth tonight, was busy all day. Mr. Piper, myself, and Ms. Posey, and I think Mr. DeCosta might work elections elsewhere as well.
Yeah.
A lot of people working hard on that.
Can I add that your sister was our chairman, chairperson, and she did a great job. She had, she was very well organized, and this is only her second time, I think, being, at least at Cheyenne.
At Cheyenne, yeah, that's the second time she's been there. All right, very good.
I'll just say, real quick, thanks for having me back. I haven't been here in a while. I'm a little rusty on the special roll call, but I'm glad to be back at the ZBA. It's nice to make an appearance from time to time, and everybody that plays a role in the execution of an election is greatly appreciated by myself and the staff. We can't do it without the help of an entire village, so we appreciate everybody that gets involved.